Father, we bow our hearts before you again today, humbling ourselves in your presence as God Almighty. Lord, again today, we thank you for your grace and your mercy upon this nation, on our county, state, community. Or would we do ask that you would forgive us for the sins that we have committed against you? Lord, we want to continue to praise you for the moisture and ask you for more as we need it. My Lord, as these commissioners meet today, Father God, to discuss the business on the agenda, I thank you that you would continue to lead them and guide them in making the correct decisions that will bless the constituents they serve in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Thanks for coming. Those that are watching, welcome. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? I'll let Commissioner Borton won't be here, but he was trying to. But he asked that if he could comment, that Commissioner comment, I'll call him if I need to. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I want to add an executive session, potential litigation, and probably around, like, we could do it right before the vouchers or something.
Okay.
If that works through. You can be right.
So you break up right before the vouchers?
Yeah, someone just brought my condition. I appreciate this.
I'll just put it after Commissioner comment. Is there any other additions or changes to the agenda?
Make motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion. I want to get a second.
Second.
And a discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Is that something? You sent it? I don't know.
It's just a file. I can't send it. It's a long file.
Hold on, if you can look at it or?
Not really.
Just to see if that's what?
Okay.
I'm planning on filing it from bottom. I'm going to get an update.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I have a motion. I have a motion to come properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor in passing the consent agenda as it sits, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? All right. Endowment funds, 915, start a little bit early, but that's okay. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. My fault. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yeah?
So this resolution, 2024-15, it's a resolution for a special prosecutor in a case. The Platte County Attorney has agreed to take the case for, on my office's behalf, for a matter that my office has conflicted out of, for various reasons, I don't really want to get into it, but that's just what this is. It's just our ethical duties to go through with that, so nothing involves you guys.
This room.
Yeah.
This is that contract.
Yes.
So somebody's giving you cash, you just try to just write it down like that?
We're handing you guys cash. This tool.
Okay.
Should we hand it to you guys?
Okay.
Along with whatever checks.
Okay.
Good?
Yep.
Never handed me cash. It hurts. Garrett's online.
Yeah.
None.
Still.
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 Never handed me cash. It hurts.
Garrett's online.
Yeah.
None.
Still.
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 I know that's why she's here and I, I'm glad she's here to help talk, but that's, when we set it up, it was to help the fairgrounds.
My question is, is if the account said we, we have an account now, right? And we can use that same account, correct?
Yes.
So what do we need to do differently, I guess?
We just got a line item as a donation for this purpose.
But are you, are you asking for another account?
Well, I would like to have a, a separate account, just for our donations. And it can be called the endowment fund, or it could be just, yeah.
I, I can see Commissioner Todd's point that the more the county is involved, the more chances there are for those funds to be made. Because ultimately, that, that board would have that option to use those in some form or fashion. But if you already have an account, what, what is it that you would need from us to, to satisfy that?
I, I'm sorry you're frustrated. I'm not sure it needs to be an endowment account, but she's saying, I think what you're saying, it would be nice to have a separate account. To me, it would help them keep better track of those donations and to make sure they're going to where that per, if that person donates fifty thousand dollars for the Rockwall, it's gonna be much easier for them to track that. Say if they had to pay seventy-five hundred dollars for his Rockwall today and so much next month, it would be much easier for them to track where that money's going. And much easier for us to see where, where it's going also.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Todd, but the Rockwall really shouldn't be by donation.
No, but we're just using that for example.
Yeah, okay, alright, I'm like.
Well, see, is what I was thinking, if the county can't come up with the money for the Rockwall, I can't go out and ask for donations towards the Rockwall.
You know, what, what might be a better idea? I, I don't know if it is or not, but you can establish a sinking fund. And that's eighteen-nine-one-oh-three, and then it can't be touched by the county commissioners. It, you, you establish, these are our ten goals. And that money is then officially earmarked for those ten goals or whatever. And I, I would assume in that creation, you could expand that down the road. The, the problem with the, the other route, the checking account, is that, all that money, in theory, it may be given to the fairgrounds, but it's given to the county that also then has to bring it into the budget. So every little donation is going through this budget process. And I just see an ability for it to be misused, or if something happens to somebody's five-hundred-dollar donation and they're unhappy about it, then potentially somebody come into the county and saying, you know, you've misused our funds that we donated, I don't know. I, I'm not trying to hamstring you, Francie, I just trying to find.
Well, the, the real reason why I'm trying to do this is so we can make control of that, our donations. And as a fair board, not through the friends affair.
So, can I read this statute?
Sure.
So each board of county commissioners may establish a sinking fund of a certain amount to be raised within a certain number of years for erecting or constructing, constructing improvements, equipping improvements already erected on a county fairground, or for purchasing land for a county fair. The fund is to be created and added to from taxation or from unexpected monies in the county. So with that sinking fund, then it's logged and we can't touch it ever. It's.
Yeah, but are we gonna be able to touch it when we need it?
Yeah, I think that's, I, I don't think it, you don't have to go through the treasurer's office with it.
Okay.
You, you don't have to, I just, I think that there's less opportunity for a board to come in and say, you've got a hundred thousand dollars. I, I mean, it could happen still.
Yeah.
But, but if that money's earmarked for that, you know.
So if we set up a sinking fund, wouldn't we have to have a, another account?
Well, it'd be a line item, yeah.
Uh, one question, wouldn't, we talked about concerns about the board misusing the funds if it's needed. But what would prevent them if we, let's say we had another poor manager position or funding going in there that would block the county from, that seems like it would, I don't know. I'm asking, suggesting that, that seems like it would be the other way, maybe risky too.
I suppose any route you go, you could have a problem, even with a friends affair situation. I mean, A, they, they may not want to deal with it, because the, the amount of money could be more than what they want to mess with. B, you could have a friends affair, I mean, unless, I mean.
What if they disband?
Yeah, I mean, what if they say, no, we're not gonna, you know? I mean, yeah, you could, it could be earmarked and it would have to be used for certain things that are earmarked. But I, I don't know, I think there's a lot of, whatever.
There's gotta be some trust.
Yeah, what, what would probably be easiest is a checking account and whatever. And hopefully nobody does anything poorly.
Just like with the MOU that I said, all you guys. We could write it up in there that we have to give you a, a thing every month.
I think you're right that we, we as a board and past boards, there's been some mistrust back and forth. And I guess we're gonna have to take a leap of faith if we're gonna get this really straightened out. You know, I'm not against it, I just, like Commissioner Todd said, we just don't want to make it more problem than it is, create more problems than you need on both sides, not just one.
I, I agree with you.
Because, you know, we just dealt with the tax situation. We don't, surprises are hard when you have budgets that are as tight as what everybody has. So, I mean, I, I don't know the answer, but I, I, you're right. At some point, we're gonna have to say, the past is the past, but we need to be cautious of that so these things don't happen again, and we've had some of those problems before.
But that's why I'm trying to get the MOU in place, so we know exactly what each other is supposed to do. And I would like to have you guys' input on that.
I didn't mean to ignore you, David.
You know, I think the big thing is here, everybody here has to be aware, we want to ensure that this money is going for what it is pegged to be. You know, I know there were hard feelings about the last one, that's over with. We need to figure out how we can do it going forward, that we can manage the money that comes in as a donation. Now, if they don't put a donation on it where they want it to go, it's county money. I mean, that's just a fact of it is, if they want to put down this for fair entertainment or if it's for fair, then it comes back to you guys, you know. We need to ensure that the public, we go out and ask them, for some of these guys give quite a bit of money, that it's going to be used for what they want to use it for and what we ask them for. We need to make, we will assure you, we can make the report any way you want to show if there's money still left in there, where it's still pegged to go and stuff like that, but we have to be fair to the public too.
How does, uh, when you're donating to a government entity, is there any tax, or, I mean, I know like donating to a 501(c)(3), you can, there's tax benefits or there's nonprofits that there's tax benefits. Is there any trouble that we would have with, we would need to provide individuals with some sort of, something if they're donating to a government entity or?
I don't know, I would talk to them if they know.
So.
I don't think we provide them.
No, that would be an accountant question, I can.
Yeah, I'd have to ask.
So then, like, I'm, I'm okay with a checking account, I, I really don't care. But I think you gotta have, the, the ten thousand we gave you guys a couple months ago?
Mm-hmm.
That has gotta be documented separately.
Yes, that, that's why the two would want to, that's your budget money, that has to be documented, whatever, how we spend it, and so will the other.
And you guys are gonna have to be diligent, because Paul, that's what Paul's gonna look at when he comes back. I mean, that's the mess we got into last time and, and, but, I don't know.
I think Paul's got it straightened out, I think we're, we're good on our end, we just need to move forward with it.
I like the idea of, you know, a separate checking account for the donations, with, you know, some guidance from Paul even, you know, how to track it, so it's, it doesn't get into a problem with the auditing, you know? Where all of a sudden it becomes, you know, oh, it should have been coming out of the county's budget, you know, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Where it's earmarked for a certain account, the individual that donates it knows it's going for what they wanted to donate it to. You know, it's gonna be a track, you know, there's gonna be some tracking on it, but I, I kinda like that idea, because then it's, it's donated to the fairgrounds there, and I don't, I know the legal side of it, how, that any way they could drag the county, you know, make it cross lines again, but yet keeping it separate. And that'd be a question for Paul.
And make sure when you talk to him, if it's going to affect the budget.
Yeah, the overall budget.
Because if we, if so.
He told me you would.
So then every single time you get a donation, we have to do a budget adjustment. Every time one comes in, it will affect the budget.
Even if it goes earmarked for a certain account?
Even if it goes into your account, we have to do a budget adjustment, because it's unanticipated funds into the budget.
But this is what Paul Todd said, is that we could guesstimate how many, how much donations we to put in the budget.
And you could have to ask him how.
You could do that.
That's, that's what he said.
I know, I said I would have to ask him.
He said it would have to be a line item.
Because what you can do in your budget, anticipated donations. Say you're anticipating twenty thousand dollars for the donation.
And you only bring in ten?
Well, yeah, I didn't, yeah, well, no, say you're anticipating twenty thousand. When you do your budget, anticipated donations, you put it at twenty-five thousand. If it stays under that twenty-five thousand, you don't have to do an adjustment. It will stay, if it stays under that, as long as it does not exceed what you anticipated budget was, then you're okay, but if it exceeds it, then you'll have to start.
Do a, do a budget adjustment, I get that.
That way, that way then, it'll save half to do a budget adjustment every time you get a donation, you know? If you anticipate that overshoot it, that way you've got that cushion. So if it doesn't exceed what you anticipated, no budget adjustment.
Yeah, because even if, if you go over, even if you get fifty bucks, every single time you get anything over that.
Yeah, once you exceed that by one penny, everyone's gonna have to be the budget adjuster.
Right, and if anyone shoots high.
So shoot high and then you're under that budget.
But then what you gotta be very careful of is, your overall budget, make sure, because it's gonna show that this is your anticipated funds, and looks, and will look like you have X amount of dollars to spend, which you really don't, because you haven't got it in. That's something on, on the budget side, you're gonna have to track, is like, oh, it shows we, we got, you know, this twenty thousand dollars, where in reality you only expect to get ten. So you're gonna have to make sure you compensate and watch that in your overall budget. If that makes, does that kinda explain it there? That way, that's kinda the way we can get around all the budget adjustments.
Or you do the sinking fund and then it's not a budget issue.
Someone we might talk to is Mary Martin, the extension agent in, in Teton County, because she, she's dealt with their fair board for thirty years. And they get a lot of donations, so she might be a good person to talk to.
Um, on the sinking fund, you're reading that, I could have misunderstood, but is, is it kind of more just for like structures and?
It says it could be constructing improvements, equipping improvements already erected on a fairground or purchasing land. I think it's pretty broad, to be honest with you. I don't know that it's.
I mean, the one worry about that one is like, say we get a donation for bouncy houses.
Yeah.
That wasn't really following that, that description.
It's possible. I, I mean, I'm sure that an attorney could say it's pretty vague in some situations, but he could also say it's pretty, it's not very big, but. I mean, bouncy houses can be an improvement for the fair, you know, I mean, it's.
For me.
Yeah. Not out of the question, it could be argued either way, I'm sure, but.
Or like a donation for, say the Ranch Rodeo.
See, that's why I was saying. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
That, that would be, I mean, the sinking fund, there's, there's some real good things that sound nice in that, but the.
I would say I like various thoughts on visiting with Mary. And see, go to a county that deals with a lot of that stuff and ask them how they handle it.
It's on a much bigger scale than we're talking, but.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
But they deal with it all the time.
Yeah, I'll call Mary, I've got her number.
But, you know, I, I just want to ensure that the donations get used for what the individual donation wanted for. So we, you know, but when it comes to the auditors and that stuff, our hands just fall and get tied. If it's set up right, that way the individual who donates makes sure it gets used for what they wanted for.
Yeah, but see, we're starting to take donations in now, so where are we gonna, where do we do, what do we do with them?
I would. Do we all check it?
What, a checking account, I mean, that's.
Can I go and open another checking account for these donations? You guys gotta vote on that. And if it doesn't work, we can always close it and put it somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, we can plead the fit, or stupidity, I mean, it's not like. Another issue is, is the Ranch Rodeo stuff. If any of that appears to be like gambling, then, you know.
Well, but the, the only thing that's gambling in the Ranch Rodeo is the cow cut. And we can do.
Figure out a way to get around that.
Get around that.
So, can they, could they use the same checking account temporarily until, just keep a separate ledger on the ten thousand dollars? And till we get a answer from somebody that has a handle on getting on the floor, that kinda stuff?
You know, that, that might be a way to get around temporary, is, you know, when you do your, you know, the ten thousand we donated to the fair, and then you make sure you line in that account, that you line item out. This donation was for this, you know, it's gonna be kind of a tracking nightmare on your end of it, but I think that might be a way to get around that, because you could, if, if their questions is asked, it was donated for this, and you can show them, this was the check that was wrote for this. This was donated for this, this was the check that was wrote for it. This was donated, but you go with this, and we have this balance left.
That is gonna be a nightmare for you.
Yeah, I know. It'd be a lot easier to have a double checking account.
For the time being, that might be a way to get around that for your donations for right now, is. Yeah.
We could do that.
As a 501(c)(3), you all use QuickBooks to do your reports? Because in our, in our church, I have all kinds of designated funds that come in. And I have separate line item accounts under, I have a general fund maybe, and under that, I have designated funds. Under that, I have four building projects. So in my QuickBooks account, if I write out a check for something that I need on the building, I just simply take it out of that building fund and put it, just transfer it actually into my general fund. I have a tracking right there, then I pay my bill out of the general fund. So if that's something that you guys, it isn't a hard deal at all.
Yeah.
You can get more slicker.
Yeah, you could add subaccount donations, and then under that, you're.
Right.
Basically another, another subaccount under your donations account, then you can put everyone that comes in for bouncy house.
Yep.
You know, you could have Ranch Rodeo.
Yep.
And then QuickBooks actually tracks it for you, it's just gonna be, when that check, when it's expended, to make sure it gets right accounted.
Yep.
That, that might be a way to get around this for, for now.
And when you do your reports, it just, yeah, just put that button, it's all there, where you spent it.
Okay.
Again, we could, I think that would be, that would satisfy Paul really good on that. You know, you can, you can document exactly where it went each time.
That's what he said to do, we could, we could do it in our account, in, say, in, um. He called it a job.
Yeah.
And, and put it in a job form and, I don't know QuickBooks that well, but I can learn.
Come out and give you a little tutorial.
What?
You know, once you get the accounts, that'd be pretty easy, and then to satisfy us, all you have to do is just do your, a report, but you can just push report and, a one-page report, you can hand it to us every month and say, hey, this is where it is, this is where we're at, everything's kosher.
Okay.
I think that would satisfy the public side of us watching, but yeah, it's safe keeping it in your control.
Okay. Do we need a vote saying that we could do this?
No, you're, you're a board.
Megan, did you have anything you wanted to add, or?
I just wanna say, Friends Affair was established, Becky's right, just as the county commissioners and the fair board, in any way needed, um, within the, the grounds of the articles of incorporation. And we would really still like to remain on the special and unusual projects, i.e., updating the playground like we did last year. Got us in a world of buying because they raised over fifty thousand dollars, and that is a huge number in 501(c)(3) world and made the paperwork a whole bunch of difference. And we would prefer in the future to stay under fifty thousand, just, unless it's a special and unusual project. That is where Friends Affair would like to be. That's probably all I really have.
Thank you. Sorry for your frustration, we're trying to figure it out with you. In the old business, we have the EMS district celebration.
Yeah, I sent you guys a draft of what I came up with through the statute. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, any questions, concerns, comments? Obviously, well, it might have to be changed depending on what happens after notice and hearing, but just need to get that notice and set a date for the hearing, get the notice out, start thinking about boundaries and assuming it just be the boundaries of county, right? So, and then start thinking about what other entities want to participate. But I think the first proj, project is getting that notice out, get a hearing date set, probably what, in August?
Was it sixty days?
Sixty days.
You want a sub-date or?
Do you have the hard copy of it, or, or ready?
Of the resolution?
Yeah.
Is it sixty days once they sign the resolution, or they can't sign the resolution?
They can't sign it.
I'm gonna be calling you.
So we, all we have to do is just announce a public hearing and a, and start advertising that.
Yeah, give notice. Give this to the public, I can, I can come up with a notice to, but I think it has to be in the paper and on the website. I remember I had the statute. Take notice that on August, whatever, a public hearing will be had on the commissioner's motion to establish a district, comments can be made. We have, get, have to give notice to the assessor and the department of, some department of revenue or something, make a comment. So we just need to get that process started.
So, um, right now, before you decide that, I'm going to need to change our second meeting in August, because that's the day of the primary election.
Either we can postpone the second meeting and just not have one, or, so, just so you know, so you don't set that hearing for the second meeting in August.
What's the date of?
I know, that's why I hurried up and pulled up the calendar.
It's sixty days from now. August sixth, or whatever.
Yeah, August, I don't think that's the right calendar.
No, that's a year old calendar.
All planes gone.
Yeah, August, our first meeting would be in August sixth, which would give us sixty days, like sixty-two days.
Before.
Yeah. If my, well, we have.
Sixty days from now is August third, so yes, August sixth would be plenty of time.
I'm glad it hasn't been posted today. It has to be sixty days from an advertised date, or the date we set?
Sixty days before a resolution. It's signed, so, I mean, we wouldn't necessarily have to sign a resolution until.
So if we got it in the paper Thursday, that still gives us sixty days by.
It only stipulates the signature on the paper though, so you can set the date for the meeting and just wait till the next meeting afterwards, that, that we can all have a, a public hearing on, or a public meeting to sign the resolution. So it could be.
So we have the public hearing on August sixth, and we'll sign it whenever you guys decide for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Whether we have a second meeting in August or just not need to get into the second.
Yeah, you'd be, I mean, you'd sign it ninety days or whatever.
Yeah, no, you can, you gotta give the notice and then. Then have the hearing, then wait sixty days after that, right? And so, I guess it doesn't really, I was thinking about it a little.
Oh, you have the hearing and then you guys will sign it sixty days after that?
Um, not less than sixty days before any resolution pursuant to this subsection assigned. Board of county commissioners shall hold a public hearing.
Whoa.
And publish a post-resolution. So not less than sixty.
It's confusing.
Oh, that's confusing.
Not less than sixty days before. Yeah, you gotta have the public hearing and then wait sixty days to sign the resolution.
Sounds like you can have a hearing whenever.
Yeah, we, that kinda reason, we can have the public hearing in two weeks.
If you wanted to.
And then we have to wait at least sixty days before we sign them.
You guys have to advertise a public hearing for three times?
Um, does it, does it state in there how many?
No.
No, so you can only, you only have to advertise it once, which that would give you plenty of time at the public hearing and after. And then that would start your hundred-and-twenty day.
That would give us enough notice?
I would recommend that we don't rush it, I mean, just follow the, I mean, because this is confusing. I mean, I, I think it'd be better if we advertised for a public hearing, give it sixty days and.
Then we're in another sixty days for the resolution.
I like this, that, I like that approach. Commissioner Todd.
So advertise for two weeks, once Michael gets that prepared, advertise for two weeks and then just see where it falls, but he's gonna have to advertise the date of the public hearing, so he'll have to figure that out.
Who would, who could you talk to about this?
Not one other county has done it, I've already asked, you guys are the first.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just different, it's just different than what you usually think about. Usually we have the sixty days notice period, but it's kinda backwards.
Cause I thought we could piggyback off of somebody else and we can't, cause no one else has done it.
I, I think we have, we're on the, the right line. Uh, maybe I could just reach out to the list, my listserv and see if anybody has any differing interpretations of the issue, but I think, alright, give notice of the hearing, public can comment, anybody can comment. And then you have to wait that sixty days, but maybe I can just reach out once and see if anybody has any, see what a different idea.
One of the thoughts for a sixty-day timeframe too, is it gives the public an opportunity to discuss it, I guess, like, because it will be, if they, if the public votes on it, it's gonna be another tax on the public. So I don't, I think you can skirt it, I don't know that you should.
No. Because this, when you're forming it under this particular subsection, the entire bill has to be voted on by the public, so.
Well, so it won't go on this election because once, once this is formed, then they have to form their board. They have to go through the assessor, they have to go through the state. That, that can't even be done until December and then January is when they do that. This will not go on this year's ballot, no matter, no matter how fast you go with it. Just because of the other stuff that has to be done with the assessor, the state. And the boundaries and all of that that has to be established. Once they form the district itself, because then they have to form a board and then all of that, then they have to form the boundary.
So, would you like a motion to approve advertising? I'll make a motion that we, that our county attorney starts advertising a notification process for a Western County-wide EMS district as soon as possible.
I have a motion to do the advertising for the Western County, advertising for the public meeting to create the EMS. I have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have no favor.
And did you second that?
Yes.
Refresh it, they would kick everybody out and do that, come back in?
Well, I would, we, we had a problem this morning, Charles was on here and he said he got it straightened out, but it's, you can see like right now it's working. My apologies to the people that are on the Zoom meeting, we have a very low internet signal and it's doing us fits with the sound. It works and then it goes to high bars, I don't know, like now, so. Okay. Moving on, Commissioner's Lieutenant for Resolution AG opinion update. Everybody got a copy of it? It's not an official opinion, but it is an opinion that's, I think, valid and for my purposes, since I was the one that brought that up. I, you know, can't stand in the middle of the road and not follow the statute, so to me it's a dead issue. I think, I still personally believe that we've had issues with it in the past, even though we're not having issues with it now. And at some point, we have to hold ourselves accountable for those things and that's all of us, not just one or the other. So at this point, I'd say it's a dead issue, but, you know, it has been a problem in the past, whether we recognize it or not. Unless, Michael, do you have anything you want to add to it?
No, I don't think you'd get a different answer to AG to the morning depth investigation. I think it was pretty clear what.
Well, I'm glad we had it sent there, that was a suggestion that Commissioner Todd had and I appreciate that, but.
I think that Michael ought to read some portion of it into the public minutes. So that for future boards, it's there and not just conjecture at some time that the discussion is had again. Because even Mr. Ertman was here and said, we've had this discussion at one time.
So I think he said something about a fine he gave him.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
And they found out it was.
My point is, I don't want to stand in the middle of the road, that's not a good way to be and so I shouldn't kill that. Since I was the one that brought it up, I just feel like, you know, it's something that we had talked about or I had talked about in the past and I wanted to keep my word on it. But go ahead, please, please do, that's why we added it, because I wanted it to be on the public eye.
Yeah, so I reached out to Brandy Monger, like the AG, she's a civil person down there. She says that she's not sure what she's, we're anticipating, but this is more of an informal type of opinion. She said, given this might be time sensitive, she wanted to share informal thoughts. We can discuss more if that would be helpful. She, she's concerned that the proposed resolution potentially diminishes the county commissioner's salaries during term and violation of the law of the Constitution. She cites Article 14, Section 1 that requires fixed indefinite salaries. And that was a concern you guys had before. And then she talks about some case law about changing fixed indefinite salaries during the term of an elected official. Talks about Blackburn versus the Board of County officers of Park County. Talks about Article, or Article 14, Section 1, meaning a certain precise, exact and clear salary. And that the salary should not be sliding up or down based on the fluctuations of the assessments of the county. Considering them with the constitutional provision fixing salaries of county officers, meaning fixed indefinite salary per year. So it's unconstitutional to increase or decrease during the term of the officer and after his election or appointment. And then I, there's the statute entitled 18 that was brought up too, this wasn't in this opinion, I don't believe. But that talks about fixed indefinite salaries too. So constitutional provision that, that statute, I think, it's pretty solid on that it shouldn't happen.
You know, I just, I think it's some, a short blurb in the official minutes that, for history, some of it's there and the future board.
What would you, I mean, would you make that for the time of record?
Yeah, I think what Michael said, I mean, basically that 14-1 that she quoted, I think is probably direction for a future board to then just say, here it is and this is why.
Along with that, you know, you know, I was in agreement with you on it. If, if that's not possible to go that way, I'm gonna still encourage us to really look at doing our own policies and procedures since we expect others groups to do the same and make sure that that's in our own policies and procedures. About attendance, just as, as a moral and ethical issue.
I don't think anyone, I don't think Commissioner Todd is condoning the unnecessary absence if you run for office and you were supposed to be somewhere. Then we've got to make every effort to do that, I don't think he's saying, you know, that that's okay, so.
No, I, and I don't know, you know, I've served with some great commissioners in here over the last six years that aren't here anymore. And, and attendance at times, you know, is, it is what it is. But I, I'm not gonna, I don't want to sit and judge somebody for missing a meeting because whatever's important to them is important to them. And I don't know that anybody was really severely out of line. I don't want to be the judge of that, I guess.
All right, any other comments on that? Vault side update.
Well, I wanted to get this on the agenda because I've been trying to reach out to Mr. Campbell. There's just been no response whatsoever. So, I don't know if at this point, I know if Becky has any differing ideas, it might be time to get at least a complaint drawn up and, and sent over to him and say, hey, if you don't do something, we're gonna file this thing.
Yeah, because we have not been paid for, oh, a year, maybe more. We did receive that one check and it was way less than what we should have. We did not cash it because Michael said, once you cash it, then you're accepting that lower portion, the percentage. I continually update him daily on all of our documents. He's continually been updating those to the website, which he's continually making profit on everyone that goes to the website and giving us nothing off of that. I have stopped updating him. I'm not giving him any more of our updates, so if anybody needs to come and get documents, they're just gonna have to come physically here and look at our documents. I told Michael I was gonna stop doing that because we're doing all of the work for him and he's profiting off of our documents. So, yeah, I agree, Michael's gonna have to draw up something that says, look, you haven't paid us since this date. You owe us all of the back pay for that. I don't know, I don't know what else to do.
This is a question from Michael. That contract that was in place, do we even have a leg to stand on to go after it?
I think based on the course of conduct after it expired, yeah. And the communications that we had early last year regarding payment and whatnot, yeah. I mean, it's not rock solid, but it's not frivolous.
My question would be, we've set a precedence and so has he by responding to those, what I would call negotiations on a compromise? Which would, I mean, that alone would, would show a different status quo, I would think. And I think we should be done talking about it and, you know, we drew the line in the sand and we've allowed him to kind of cross it about 18 times too many already.
Yeah.
The county's owed money and I think we need to go after it.
Well, we need to get something in place. Even, I mean, get your money and then what's called specific performance of a contract that we agreed into, you know, we have it in writing, so.
What was it, you're wanting to send him a?
My initial thought is, do you say, draw up a complaint like that, you'd file in court and say, look, you got 10 days or we're just gonna file this and have a judge decide this thing.
Can I make that in a form of a motion? I think we've moved on and I'm tired of dealing with it.
I would check for that. Your motion has been properly seconded, filed complaint against the, I'll call it, vault side. Is there?
Well, my thought was to draw up the complaint and say, here's your last chance, you got 10 days. And then, just so you know, the complaint's ready.
We're gonna take it to the court.
Yeah.
After X date.
Yeah, so not file it right away, but.
So, give him 10 days, this would be mailed to him or served, it would be mailed or served?
Mailed.
Mailed, so he would have 10 days from what, the day of you sending the letter or?
Yeah.
Send it, well, certified, registered, that way you know he's got it, so that was, when he signs it, that's when the 10 days starts.
Yeah.
My question would be, I'm just going off of what I know is, if I have, somebody that has accounts, I have several accounts. And then at the bottom it says, if you don't pay within a certain time, it's like 1.5% interest. That should be calculated in those, or have we any grounds to stand on to charge interest for the money that he's been holding? And I think that should be included in that complaint, so that we're getting, I mean, he's using our money without interest, the county or the taxpayers' money without paying any interest on it. I don't know any fact that does that. Well, it isn't.
Well, I'd have to, that's where it gets kind of slippery because the contract's so poor. I don't know if there's a penalty in that, I don't think there's a penalty in there. I don't think there was, I think we, in our negotiations, we had some, something.
I'll, I'll make sure, I would think there would be some kind of a reasonability there that, you know, that we could. Collecting it obviously is important, but I would thank you for the personal order, collecting should get it back.
So, a friendly amendment to that would be to send that in a certified, certified man. Mr.?
So I have moved to draw, Mr. Todd moved to allow the attorney to draw up a complaint and.
Yes, and it is notice.
And not say you have 10 days, probably say that and 10 days to respond.
Giving, giving 10 days or two weeks or whatever notice?
10 days notice. Or it will be filed with the judge. Right?
Yeah.
So we have a motion that has been, a second, it was a proper second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
When governments pay us to get the word out, governments pay us, but we actually work for the public. And so it's a tough spot we're in because we have to piss off our own clients, basically. The people who sign the checks, we get in fights with because we're fighting for the public and, I don't know, all I can do is say that we just got to keep doing what we do. And hope that governments, especially in election year, governments need to trust professionals and we are the professionals in Western County to get their message out.
Exactly. I don't, I can't think of anybody else that does a better job. We put a lot of time and effort into getting all of the product out there and making sure that we reach people in as many avenues as possible. I don't think people understand how much time and effort that we put into those things. And it's most definitely more time and effort than we get compensated for.
Moving on to Resolution 84 dash 1.
No, you need to take them.
Oh, you have each copy, alright.
I know, but Michael was gonna talk about what he thought.
Yeah.
It's about the dogs at, at the town.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at the statute, it follows it well and I mean, you know, it follows the statute basically on point. No dogs at large or running dogs. Commissioners can make this resolution and impose the penalty on, the sheriff can take their actions upon a complaint being. Sheriff can't take or a deputy can take their actions upon a complaint being made, but I just don't know what the purpose of this 40 years ago was within three miles of the corporate limits of the city of Newcastle. I'm not sure what the intent of that was and it doesn't sound like it covers Osage right now.
That was the question.
Yeah.
So the way I read it is anything past three miles of Newcastle is out three miles of Newcastle and then everything else. Is the way I read it, because I believe that the city cops can go out three miles.
It says within three miles, so.
Right, within three miles and then everything within the, outside of that three miles is the way I read it.
I think you got it backwards.
Yeah, it says within three miles.
Because the city cops can cover within the boundaries.
Within the city boundaries.
But I, I don't know, I was thinking that they could go out always.
The way I read it, this doesn't, it just covers the three, three miles outside of, and incorporated boundaries of Newcastle. Which I don't know what the intent of that was four years ago.
Is this something that we can change or make a new resolution and take that part off? Because, you know, I'm thinking not just Osage, but.
Entire county.
An entire county, if you get a pack of dogs running out in the county, they can pull livestock and hurt people and. kill livestock, and hurt people, and I think it should be a county-wide thing, because that does happen.
Or, sorry, isn't, Michael, is there something in state statute that actually addresses that, for dogs, you know?
I do believe there are some other criminal potential charges that can be brought, this kind of provides another layer of enforcement, that's not, that doesn't necessarily have to involve, say, going to court, or whatnot.
Well, I, I don't know why the county commissioners have to get involved in this, wouldn't it be a law already, like, wouldn't the city cover inside, and then the county cover everything that the city, or even like a town or county?
Between the cities and towns, they can do their own ordinance, in their jurisdiction, and I think there's something in the state books about it already, as a law.
I think, I don't know if there's just a general dog at large, or animal at large crime, I know there's vicious animals, and the term of vicious animals, but I don't know if, off the top of my head, if there's any just random dogs or cats at large, because that's what the animals are defined as in this statute. I don't see any harm in having this resolution county-wide.
Don't put it.
No, don't put it, just leave it, or something, hold that out.
I have to agree with Becky, it kind of depends on how you read it, but it's, if they meant it that way, that everything outside of three miles from town, it's poorly written at best.
That's one, my thing is that that's how I'd say it.
I mean, you read it over and over, and go, "Okay, I think they meant the other," but it's very poorly written.
I agree, and that's why I wanted clarification, and you guys can clarify that, and extend that resolution, or amend the resolution, because on the state statute, 1131-301, it says, "The Board of County Commissioners may declare running at large of any specified animal in an unincorporated, unincorporated area within the county limits a public nuisance." So it does have to be brought up by the Board, to the Board of Commissioners, and I just want to make sure I'm in within the legal rights.
There are also figures, I mean, you'd have to go through the advertising process, if we were to amend this, we'd have to advertise it, and, yeah, I don't know why, it's just weird to me, why Newcastle, and why the three miles? What's that, why not just unincorporated areas within the county? I don't know why they wrote it that way, I'm sure there was, is there any evidence available from that meeting?
I do not know, because we, I mean...
All I can think of is, it was written either backwards, or there's, you know, how discussions go at meetings, and different people have different voices, and maybe some folks didn't want county regulation in their area at that point, or something.
So, this says, "Any dog found in an unincorporated area of the county within three miles of the corporate limits of the city of Newcastle cannot be determined, whose ownership cannot be determined within the three miles, may be destroyed by the county sheriff to eat." So that does specify just three miles. They specifically said just three miles.
Where, where I got to read this, is it was, basically, they thought there was a problem with dogs right outside the city limits coming in, and this would give the sheriffs something to take care of that, protect, basically, to help the city out, you know, because it's within the three-mile radius, four miles out, they don't care about a dog running large, within that three-mile radius is where they get, they care about it.
So that's why I'm wondering if there's a state statute already in place, because there is one for the city, maybe we should ask the sheriff if he even wants the county involved in this, because he might not want you guys...
That'd be a good idea.
Because right now, when you call, they say that the sheriff can't do anything.
It's probably a good idea, yeah.
But, again, if you go to Wyoming statute, 1131-301, and you go to where it's, I just saw it, give me a second, I think it's C, "Upon filing a complaint, the county sheriff may arrest or issue a summons to the owner of any animal which is running at large or has attacked a person," so...
So see, that's already in place.
But, then I go back to A, which says that the Board of Commissioners may declare a running at large on a specific, any specific animal in an unincorporated area within the county limits a public nuisance. So, it's like a, sort of a catch-22. I have to ask for your permission to call the sheriff to, for him to do his job, according to a statute, 1131-301-C.
Yeah, that's why the resolution passed, if that's the intention, it might be a good idea to communicate with Sheriff Koval, and see what participation he has there.
Yeah, I think we should tell you what, and I'd also, let's dig up the minutes from the meeting, and see what was done at that date, and why, if there's anything. Get some info.
To the next meeting, and then we'll reach out and have Brian comment on it, that's a good point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to new business, just a reminder, we have an upcoming meeting next, our next meeting will be in October.
It's on June 18.
June 18, so that's just a reminder.
At nine, right?
At the City Hall, and thank you for upping, having us in the City Hall for that meeting. Public comment? Is there any public comment? No public comment? Okay, Commissioner comment? I'll start off, Chief Commissioner. Commissioner Borton, can you hear us? We'll give him a call up there, because he did, I don't know where it went.
I can, can you hear me there?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent, I've been kind of in and out, the volume hasn't been working too well. Commissioner comment, I would like to recognize Eric Dzinski for his exemplary involvement with RPM Days last weekend, he was jolly on the spot, helped us out in every way, some of the things that we didn't need help for, he jumped in, and did anyway, I wanted to make sure that everybody knows how good of a manager we have out there.
Thank you for your comment, it's Commissioner Borton, I'd like to act a little bit, I thought the manager, you guys, the board did a good job of picking their guy, he was, that's the first manager in a long time that I've seen that was there, engaged, and just was so helpful in what he did to make RPM a huge success, so that's a credit to Eric for starting RPM Days, and him for the work he did. That's, that's all I have to give you. Any other issues that need to be brought before this board? So we'll adjourn...
We have an executive session, we have the ballot board.
Sorry, bud.
I make a motion going to executive session, under AIIII, is there a second? Litigation.
Motion for executive session, under AIIII, is there a second?
I see.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Closing out, we'll go to executive session, Commissioner Borton, I will call you on the phone.
But...
It's a little more complicated.
It's unfortunate.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms, and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.